Okay. Set that up. Six, four, five. Oh, okay. Where am I at here? Oh, five. And there you go. Can you stop this recording and then start it when? When it's recording, I just need to. Okay. Blue.
Hello, does that cause a problem? Evidently not.
It's here.
Okay, say something. Can you say something? Hello?
Hello?
Do I hear feedback?
No. Feedback.
I'm hearing a little something here. I'm wondering if we get a bunch more up here, what happens?
You mean you hear the echo?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's recording, okay.
Oh, can you stop it?
No, because he said if I stop it, that. What happened is that. Things were different.
Huh? Okay. Okay, yeah. Well, then I'll just. If she pauses recording, could she do that?
Yeah, there is.
You might want to try to ask, but it's stopping. Counsel's special session and public hearing to order on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, at 5:36 PM. Roll call. Mr. Page.
Eric Page, Park District.
Todd Smith, Police Commissioner.
Shelley, you will be Commissioner.
Michelle Tesdahl. Tourism Commissioner.
Thank you.
Tim Luke, Water Commissioner.
Jim Trepp, Mayor, Emergency Preparedness, thank you. Declaration of Conflicts of Interest and Ex parte contact. Hearing none, moving on, but we still have an error. But we will try and move on. Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the City of Kaiser for making their chamber available to us. Very nice of them, and they've been here helping us try and get set up, so thank you, everybody, and we did have a few computer glitches that we had been working on, so thank you. Under announcements, we've been, Danielle Bethel, County Commissioner, has asked to address the council and everybody, so Commissioner Bethel?
I don't think so. Maybe.
Can you hear me on the Zoom? Maybe they can tell me from this side. Okay, so. The last thing that I was talking about was Counselor Smith had reached out to me last week with a concern in regards to FEMA funding running out for law enforcement. Law enforcement has been funded 75% by FEMA and 25% by Marion County for an overtime capacity since the fire, and that capacity was primarily weakened overtime. That funding for FEMA is technically expiring. The local level FEMA officer has asked for an extension. Marion County, in any way, you know, last week, we talked to our coordinator about an extension, and so that option is out there, that they're not confirmed. And I really want to make sure that residents are, those properties are there for, and rebuilds that they're building there for, as do with other commissioners. And so I had a conversation there today with Representative Clem, who's on the legislative wildfire naming task force, and we put in a request yesterday of approximately $275,000 to continue that coverage for March through October 2021. So I just want the council and residents to know that we acknowledge that law enforcement presence is important, and that we are working towards that, and currently, there's not going to be any reductivity in coverage because that funding is potentially falling short. We will continue to have the coverage that we have going forward. And if there's questions with counselors, I can follow up later on to what that would look like. And then my last thing is really to just say to the public, recreation is not open at the canyon currently. There's a lot of hazards going on up there. I was notified today by a resident with a pretty serious concern of coyotes at the North Fork, and I recognize that this is the city of Detroit, but this goes to show for all of the communities up there that recreation isn't currently open and maintained. It's really not that safe in particular areas of the canyon. And so if you can please spread the message that we're working towards that, and until the city says, hey, come back, we want you to stay out, until the North Fork says it's open, it's closed. And be very cautious, and please be respectful of the property owners' lands, there is very, you know, diligence of them, and unsafe in a lot of cases. I was up on Sunday night in Detroit, and I saw a fair amount of what I call the peep blues in the downtown area, and I'm very concerned about that. And so if we all can work together to spread the message of, please be gracious and don't go and make people spaces, but if you happen to need to be there, be the safest you can be, because there's hazards. Trees are still falling. There's lots of things happening, so just be cautious. So that's all I have tonight. I'll make the recap and send this to Shelley so she has it all for her notes if you want it for later. And then the commissioners will be happy to hear from anybody at any point, and of course, we're always pleased to work with members of the council, and we're really grateful for all that you're doing. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Bethel. And I know for some people out there, it was hard to understand all of that, and we apologize, it will be available in a minute. So moving along, opening a public meeting for Contract Review Board. I now recessed the Detroit City Council to go into a meeting of the Contract Review Board to consider granting exemptions to the requirements for competitive bids for a temporary water treatment plant. The Contract Review Board will conduct a public hearing under Detroit Municipal Code For information of those of you listening, the council is also the Contract Review Board. Change hats here for a little bit. As Chair of the Contract Review Board, I call the meeting to order at 5:51. And City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Shelley Engel, present.
Here.
Jim Trepp, Mayor Trepp.
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Page?
Present.
And can you?
Keep going. This one's online.
We have two on Zoom.
Tim Luke?
Counselor Luke, are you here?
Tim Luke, I'm sorry.
I'm here.
Thank you.
And Michelle Tesdahl.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, Coram being present, the Contract Review Board has earlier heard the initial results of the city's options and efforts to procure temporary water treatment facilities. The city council has held numerous meetings with its consulting engineers and has determined that the alternatives are available, the alternatives available, serve the city utilizing certain contractors with procedures and experience that can bring water to the city quicker than through a competitive bidding process. But to utilize alternative methods, the city must comply with Chapter 3.04 of the code and have the Contract Review Board conduct a public hearing, make a decision, and adopt findings in support of the decision. A public hearing was noticed for this evening. The city's engineering firm will now present a staff report of the process undertaken to date and make recommendations. The recommendations follow earlier presentations made to the council over the past four months and recommendations made to the city council where it gave a go-ahead on the February 1st and February 9th Contract Review Board meeting. Following the presentation, the public will be given the opportunity to give input whether the exemption to the requirements for competitive bid should be allowed. Following the close of the public comment, I will close the hearing and the Contract Review Board will make a decision. A draft set of the findings has been prepared for your consideration and has been available before the meeting. You each have a copy. Now, open the public hearing. Matt Del Merle, HBH, staff report, please.
Yes, so I guess a while back, I think it was November, early on, the city started seeking, I guess, well, started reaching out to manufacturers of treatment equipment to source a water treatment, temporary water treatment equipment for the city's operation. We had reached out to a number of treatment manufacturers, and kind of the one that came back that was fitting the city's schedule, had equipment available, and could provide it, meeting Oregon Health Authority regulations, was Westec. So the city had entered into an agreement with Westec to provide that equipment. That equipment is now on site. And the other project we're looking at right now would be this short-term temporary facility that we can get water up and running a lot faster than through the USDA project would be to have a temporary shelter constructed, purchased and constructed. The Westec equipment placed inside the shelter by a contractor, and pipe, temporary piping put up along with the necessary tanks and accessory equipment that is necessary to operate the plant. And so we're recommending Olson LLC. There are other contractors that we can recommend if need be. Our kind of thought process on the sole, or the non-competitive procurement would be that any cost savings that might be present through a competitive award on a relative, a contract of relatively small size would be negated through city staff and engineering review and answering of questions, and then would just delay the process. So that's kind of the thought on the non-competitive. Excuse me. We are recommending that the larger USDA contract is put out for competitive bids, though, at this time, once water is restored to the city.
Okay, thank you, Matt. At this time, would anybody in the public like to provide public comment on whether the Contract Review Board should grant exemptions to the requirements for competitive bids for a temporary water treatment plant? Each person speaking will have up to three minutes to make any comments. Anybody from the public who would like to make a comment on the staff report? Anybody from the public who would like to make a staff, comment on the staff report or the proposal? And one final time, are there any members of the public who wish to provide comment in this hearing? And I don't see, I see none. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. The Contract Review Board now will consider whether to grant an exemption under Detroit Municipal Code 3.04.030 to the requirements for competitive bids for a temporary water treatment plant. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the contract. Yes.
Only, I don't, the reason I'm going to ask Counselor Engel to do it is we have verbiage from the attorney. Is that okay with you?
Absolutely, I didn't realize that, sorry.
Well, we just got it, so thank you, thank you. Counselor Engel?
I make a motion that the Contract Review Board grant exceptions to the requirements for competitive bids based upon the staff presentation and adopt the findings as presented or modified, if that's the case, which we didn't. In Draft Resolution 614.
Okay, I have a motion, Counselor Engel, to accept the contract, to do, to accept the report, discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Abstention, motion passes. There being no further business of the Contract Review Board, I hereby adjourn the Contract Review Board, so the city council may reconvene. I adjourned at 5:59 and reconvene the Kaiser, the Detroit City Council, sitting in the Kaiser Chamber, sorry, Detroit City Council at 5:59. The Contract Review Board has acted and approved a resolution exempting contracts for the temporary water treatment plant from the requirements for competitive bids. That action of the Contract Review Board will be recorded as Resolution Number 614. Now, a city council, is there a first motion to accept a resolution, and actually only one motion to accept the resolution passed by the Contract Review Board, and then a second? Do I have a motion for that, for that to happen, I'm sorry?
Mayor Trepp?
Counselor Engel?
I make a motion that the city council accept the Contractor Review Board's resolution granting exceptions to the requirement.
There being no further business of the Contract Review Board, I hereby adjourn the Contract Review Board. So the city council may reconvene. I adjourn at five fifty-nine and reconvene the Kaiser, or the Detroit City Council, sitting in the Kaiser Chamber, sorry. Detroit City Council at five fifty-nine. The Contract Review Board has acted and approved a resolution exempting contracts for the temporary water treatment plant from the requirements for competitive bids. That action of the Contract Review Board will be recorded as Resolution number six one four. Now, a city council, is there a first motion to accept a resolution? And actually, only one motion to accept the resolution passed by the Contract Review Board. And then a second, do I have a motion for that, for that to happen? I'm sorry.
Mayor Tratt?
Counselor Angle?
I make a motion that the city council accept the Contract Review Board's resolution granting exceptions to the requirements for competitive bids based upon the staff presentation and adopt the findings as the city's resolution number six one four.
Have a motion, Counselor Angle, to accept the, the change? Second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Page. Discussion? All those in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. And there, so now we have unfinished business. Two real quick things. We have an IGA between the state of Oregon and the city for removal of trees. We thought that was already done. But do I have a motion to approve the IGA between the state of Oregon and the city of Detroit for tree removal?
All I have a motion will be approve that IGA, the IGA between the city and that's
State of Oregon, yeah.
State of Oregon.
Have a motion, Counselor Page, to accept the IGA between the state of Oregon and the city of Detroit, second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Todd, accept Smith. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. An IGA between Marion County and the city of Detroit. And do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the IGA between Marion County and the city of Detroit.
Have a motion to accept the contract, the IGA between the Marion County and the city of Detroit. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. I did overdo one thing. We have to go through Resolution six fourteen, six fifteen. Right by it. Resolution six fourteen. Somewhere. Well, I seem to have lost it. So Resolution six fourteen. I've got a copy of six fifteen, but I can't find it. Sorry about that.
Counselor, where Angle has one. And so is Counselor Page.
Counselor, Resolution six fourteen basically is the city experienced fires at the beginning of September eighth. It also, it allows us to enter into contract with HPH and Olson to do the construction under the Emergency Act that we have declared. We're going to adjust that a little bit. So do I have a motion to accept Council Resolution number six fourteen?
I make a motion that we accept Resolution six fourteen.
Have a motion, Counselor Angle, to accept Resolution six fourteen, second?
I'll second.
Second, Counselor Tesdahl. Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Resolution number sixteen is just a cleaning up of the emergency that we declared, declared back in September. It refines it a little bit, brings it down to pretty much just the water. And once we get that back to you, we can look at maybe coming out of that stream. But right now, this is just to clean that up, the current resolution for a, declaring emergency. So do I have a motion to accept Resolution number sixteen?
Make a motion to accept Resolution number sixteen?
Motion, Counselor Luke, to adopt Resolution six fifteen. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Counselor Angle? Somebody have something to put in discussion, counsel?
I think you needed a second.
Oh, thank you.
I'll second that.
Second, Counselor Tesdahl. So I have a motion and a second to accept the Resolution number six fifteen. All, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And that takes care of all the business we have for this evening.
Excuse me, Jim, for just a second. We didn't make a second on that very about the Contract Review Board.
I may have missed it, but does somebody recall making the second on that first motion when you were Contract Review Board?
I had the same question about that.
Thank you. Del, what do we do here? I messed up.
So Mayor, the appropriate thing to, to do would be to go back into session as the Contract Review Board and take the, the motion that Counselor Angle made and then accept a second and have a re-vote.
Thank you. So I recessed the city council meeting at six oh five and reconvene the Contract Review Board at six oh five. And Counselor Angle, would you reach a motion one more time, please?
I make a motion that the city council accept the Contract Review Board's resolution granting exceptions to the requirements for competitive bids based upon the staff presentation and adopt the findings as the city's resolution number six one four.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Counselor Smith, Counselor Page, discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. I now
So Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So now you're going to go back into session as counsel and could you reaffirm that the council accepts Resolution six one four? Because before it wasn't activated. So you want to act again as counsel as you did earlier.
Okay, so six one four, okay. So I adjourn the Contract Review Board at six oh six and reconvene city council. And Counselor Angle, do I have your motion again to accept Resolution six one five?
I make a motion that the city council accept the Contract Review Board's resolution granting exceptions to the requirements for competitive bids based upon the staff presentation and adopt the findings as the city's resolution number six one four.
Thank you. Have a motion, Counselor Angle, to accept Resolution number six one four, second?
I'll second.
Counselor Smith, seconds. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. And with that, I do apologize to everyone for that oversight. Nothing else. The next meeting, just for people's information, will be next Tuesday, March ninth. It's our regularly monthly meeting at six thirty PM. Unfortunately, this facility is not available, so we're going to try and keep doing this live. And we'll be at the Cog Office at one hundred High Street Southeast, one block south of the Marion County Courthouse, same block as the Elsinore Theater. Can go from there. So just mark your calendars. Any other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Most to adjourn, second Counselor Smith. Discussion? We are adjourned at six ten. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.